Run a department, you know what you're taking on when you take the job.
Yeah, I do, I guess.
So you have to find a way to make it work.
Why can't the council be helpful by giving her an assistant?
The assistant's not, it's most likely not going to be trained. It would take months to, she just, they just stood up here and said it was going to take months to train her. How are you going to get in an assistant and think for six months it's going to be trainable?
Well, I mean, she's got people that worked there for years that know what to do. That's kind of what the assistant does.
Two years they went without an assistant and they had numerous people working there that did not take that job.
That was Martha though, I mean, we don't know really why that was.
Mr. President, can we keep one voice at a time at the record?
I mean, we've got a new leader and here she stands. Why don't we support her and quit talking about the last two years? You know, that's ancient history. Let's move on. Support the leader we have in front of us.
So, so to your point of offering support, I still am unclear as to why six months salary out of edit for an assistant superintendent is the only support that they need? Like, why did we arbitrarily, or the commissioners, or staff at the manor decide that $24,000 was the number, it'll cover six months, and that's the support that we need? No more, no less.
That's the commissioners though. I mean, they approved the 24,000. They didn't discuss it with Martha, as far as I know, they didn't discuss it with me. We didn't know until they asked for that.
So right here.
So, yeah, again, I just, I mean, I think that we're approaching a vote on this. I don't think that edit is appropriate for this request. It doesn't fix the problem. I'm happy to engage in a conversation that fixes the manor in a sustainable way. This is not that. And I don't want people to be virtue signaling and trashing the council saying that we didn't approve the $24,000 request when we are here to help the manor. This is not helping the manor. This isn't even banding. This doesn't fundamentally fix the problem. If we pass this, the manor is not going to suddenly be profitable.
Do you have suggestions?
Yes, I do. But I'm saying, the vote right now is do we approve an edit request? So, that's what we have to vote on right now.
I feel real strongly if you're running 24,000, the director needs an assistant. Stand by. I mean, we're talking 24,000 there. We go back to the economic development, we put 164,000 there. I have seen activity in those fields for five years, other than R A M C.
Because I have to take.
I'll fall retro down. If I seen a plan, if I seen improvement, and if I seen what this $24,000 was going to.
How Martha ran it, and I don't, I don't feel like that's right.
Well, I mean, we could talk about it a long time. This is just about an edit vote.
I agree, I agree. So I've lost track of where we're at with the motion in a second.
Who, who? Motion. I have Paul Reiter.
Doc, second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the $24,000 request to Carol Manor from edit funds?
I would just like to say that in joint meeting with the commissioners, all of you said you would give help to the manor to help them turn things around. This is a way for you to do that, that's not coming out of your county general fund. And just like he said, how much money have you given to other places that have done nothing with the money? So, I feel like you said you were going to help support them, and you should do that. This is a way for you to do that, regardless of whether, hopefully, they can turn things around in six months. If they don't, then you guys need to have the guts to say, we're going to close it. You, your actions today tell everybody in this room that you really want to close it. You don't want to work with them. You don't want to help them. And that's, that's the truth. So we either close it or help them.
We have a motion on the floor. We want to specifically vote on this edit request. There are a lot of opinions and passionate discussions that can be had over the manor. Specific to this edit request, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of passing this request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Aye. Motion fails two to four.
Mr. President. Like, I'm happy to engage this conversation with a larger, larger, higher level. I don't want to disrupt if you want to go through edits, but I don't want, I don't want, there are a lot of people here specifically about the manor issue. And I want to make it clear that we are here to have a conversation about that. This was just the wrong bucket of money to try to plug this hole. It doesn't even plug the hole. I mean, that's what my core problem is. We need a holistic, if we're going to fix the manor, this doesn't fix it. And, and I don't accept that, you know, we had to make a half measure so that we can make a full measure later. I would just rather have a full measure. From a, from a, just to be really super clear, the Carol Manor has cash flow sufficient to carry on for several months. An immediate, it's not like if we don't pass this, that they can't pay their bills. It's not, that's not the issue. We, I mean, so we need to have a long-term, sustainable, sustainability conversation around the manor. So, that is a conversation I'm willing to have at any time. So, I, I'll just defer to the chair about how you want to handle it.
Yeah. I would, I would challenge the assertion that we don't care about the manor or that this decision is by default our determination to close the manor. That's not true. But we do need to get through these edit requests. It's my job to facilitate that, and we need to make sure we get that done. And then we are under time constraints as well.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
To consider the ARCA funds then, because the ARCA funds were supposedly to help people that had issues when COVID hit. And COVID had a big effect on what happened with the manor.
So there are.
That would, I would like to just suggest that you consider that.
Thank you for that suggestion. There are other things that we can put in place that would provide a better help and support to the manor than this $24,000 edit request.
Okay.
Which was reflected in this vote.
Has definitive timeline? Tracy mentions that she would be happy to review a plan. What's a definitive timeline instead of this being deferred, deferred, deferred? Let's, let's hear a timeline of when you want to see a plan to increase census or.
I think you misunderstood. I was asserting that the new administrator would bring us a plan.
So, when do you want to see this is my question. What's your timeline?
I would assume she would want to do it ASAP.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is John Rourke. I work at Carol Manor Park. One thing I do see is, we've got to recreate the wheel, if that makes sense, okay? What Martha done, or has it done, is not debated, but, and so you all know, we have issues, okay? And I can attest that Jimmy has worked a lot of hours, okay?
That's fair.
And she shouldn't be working out, she should be managing. The problem is, with the staff we have, and we're down to, to give you an example, I work midnights by myself. Why? Because we don't have a second person. Is that correct? No, but it's the way it is, okay? And we pump, and we will continue to pump. But it's, the 24,000, someone will pump it up. Instead of looking at one to the left one, as Q said, not fix the problem, it will fix the problem. But I don't see any commissioners starting anywhere in the, okay, this is what, we've got to start from some 24,000 to start. Is it going to take, oh no, it's going to take a continued way.
Yeah, that's fair. I appreciate you saying that. That dies for two to four.
I understand that.
So we're beyond that at this point. I, I think there's the desire of those in the audience is that we work with the manor, put a plan together. We've committed to that in the past. We'll continue to do that going forward. I would like to shut down conversations as it pertains to the manor and continue on with these edit requests.
Okay, sir.
There are additional edit requests that are on the agenda for today that have not been addressed yet. We're going through these line by line, so.
Motion to, to do the third election, 13,000 by the night.
Got a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
I think that this is fine. I mean, this probably needs done. This is not an edit request. I would encourage the board to please submit a request for through, through panel.
Can I explain something? This is not the head amount. She's just asking proportion. This is what the commissioners agreed to because her, she's got thousands of dollars and she is accepting this much. So, just to throw that in. She can explain a better margin.
What this is for, there is so much controversy over election integrity. And when we have machines that aren't working properly at the polling locations, people question the integrity of that election. Going into the general election, we had 12 devices, seven of which quit working. So, that is what the request is for, is to replace that equipment that failed year after year, election after election. The actual request is, I mean, the actual bid that I have is for $35,300. And that is an all-inclusive, it eliminates two other functions that we don't have to maintain. The handheld scanner, when you go and vote, they register your driver's license. That will be obsolete. It'll be included in the system. The label maker for early voting, that will be excluded. That will be included in the system. So, it's actually going to save money because I don't have other stuff that I have to buy and maintain. But I mean.
Did you just find out about this stuff? Is this why it's not budgeted? Why didn't we budget for that issue?
I did ask for more money in my election support, and it was denied.
I didn't hear anything about this conversation.
Is this time sensitive here, this 13,500?
I would like to go ahead and order the equipment so that it's in place for the municipal election, which is a smaller election. So we can work out any bugs and, because everyone that works the elections are going to have to be retrained, it's new equipment. So, it, it would be better to start with a smaller election than a presidential election next year.
So, your 24,000 should give you enough equipment to be able to do that. No, there's, you said it's 37?
35,000.
So, I'm assuming that you're pulling this 20, 35, uh.
Well, that's.
22,000 somewhere else that you're using, another source?
Yes. I'm taking that out of the election support.
Right, so, and that should be adequate to get you enough equipment to do the municipal election.
If, well, I don't know how that would work with the quote because they gave me a discount based on the amount that I was ordering.
Right. And so, I have no problem putting in an additional request for a transfer or the other 13,000 to pick the equipment, but.
I don't, yeah, I'm just hoping that it's from the edit.
Yes. So, I, I would transfer to.
Transfer from what?
Whatever you can do, it doesn't matter.
I have an line item to transfer 13,000 from.
Do you have a budget? I mean, there's a, I mean, it's a hundred and however much thousand dollars for your, for your fund.
What's your, what's your timeline on this? Because we could sit down and.
I mean, not department head, I'm sorry, councillor.
What was your question, Carol? I'm sorry.
What's, what's your timeline for needing this? I know you said as soon as possible, but.
The company told me if I could get the approval to them, and that this is the system that I want, by the end of this month, they would ship everything out. It would arrive this 7, 9, around there, of February. It would take two weeks to train me on it, so that I would be able to train others on it. And it would be able to be implemented for the primary in May. So I don't, I don't know how long I can wait. And this quote this is valid through April 3. I, I mean, I don't really want to wait that long, so I would like to have it implemented in our primary election.
Yeah, I just wondered if we sit down with this and then look at it next month.
At this, or?
Just at, at the 13,500 figure. How, how we either.
Yeah, that was just what the commissioners proved, so I was, I was good with any help that I was going to get.
I would rather transfer, but yeah, okay.
Okay, so I'm, so I need to look at a different line item to transfer that from? Is that what you're asking?
You always look for transfers.
Yeah, I think.
Even if we have to do additional, it is a timely matter. You can transfer it today. It would get, I mean, if you.
I mean, I do have, I'm sorry.
If you had a line where you can just transfer 13,500, we can backfill that later. So that you can get this done. That's what I'm saying, like.
Okay, so if I were to go ahead and place the order, have it all come out of election support?
Right.
Then you would backfill that.
So like, if you went to your office right now and looked at your budget and said, I have, I have 13,000 in a line. Doesn't matter what line, any line, and say, I just want to transfer that today so that I can use it today. We can, we can do that today. So.
Well, I, if, if I'm taking out of election support, I don't think I need to transfer. I mean, I've already got that money in there. I can use it from that account.
You would still have to do a transfer.
Yeah, the only other account.
You probably just don't have it up in the line, is what I'm saying. So just move it from one line to the other.
Yeah, I don't have another line item that has 13,000.
Is that the budget?
So I can go ahead and just order it and pay for it through my support line? Yeah, the only other line item that I have, it's got 13,000 and it is going to be payable.
Yeah, she has nothing to pull from.
What we can work on.
I think her department.
What's the total, was it?
Oh, no.
It's on the, yeah, it's election support, that's right.
Yeah, can we agree to?
I'd like to make a motion to do the 10,000 for Camden Jackson Senior Housing project to fund a generator for them.
I think she could. I mean, we could. I'm not, I'm just one person.
My suggestion, and what I think Joshua's also suggesting, and Tracy was suggesting, is that there are options outside of this edit request. So, let's schedule some time. Let's sit down and look at what options.
Now?
No.
I would entertain now, but I don't care for this.
No, we're doing edit funding right now.
I mean, I would entertain when we get done with edit funds. We can just do a transfer at the end of the meeting. It takes three seconds.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, but I, but, that's fine. But let's, let's get through the edit.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. So Paul's made a motion to approve the $10,000 for the Camden Jackson Senior Housing. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And that's for a generator, is that correct?
Yeah, it's for a generator, and invoice that they brought in was 9,713.
This is the same problem I have with the other one. Like, this is, we, we did this for Burlington. Burlington paid half.
That's good.
I, I do not recall it coming. I thought we did it out of Riverboat or something like that. I, I, this just fundamentally is not an economic development budget, from my perspective. I don't have a problem. I also, I, I, nobody has gone back to them and said, why aren't you chipping in on this? Like, we had done with other municipalities, so it's setting a precedent there. And, and I, I talked to Andy. He said that somebody had said they were going to pay like a thousand dollars, 1,500 dollars off of this. But, like, it doesn't seem right that we only paid half of Burlington and now we're paying more this way. At the very least, I think we need to have another discussion. I would also advocate that we not vote in favor of this and then advertise it out of a more appropriate fund and then discuss it again next month.
Hearing that side, I would reconsider myself.
So we have a motion, no second? And also there's a second. Time to move on.
All right, motion dies for lack of second. I'll make a note that we can follow up on this.
And the auditor has the authority to advertise now, so I think she can advertise at any point. We can have it for next month. Once we say.
Oh, no. I don't know what that you want to do.
That's fair.
That's fair. But I can think of something.
I, I do have a.
In, in one motion, I would move that we approve the Burlington Festival and Delphi Main Street requests in the amount of $3,000 and $3,500 respectively.
And the Delphi Main Street is for what, yes, what event? I'm certain it's for an event.
Yes, J T Dome with Delphi Main Street. Our request to the commissioners for edit funds is 2,000 towards old settlers and 1,500 towards, towards independent state fireworks.
This is part of my reason for voting down to the Carroll County Chamber. I know they run the grant program. And I've had a couple of people ask me why we are dishing out the 3,000 and the 3,500, and then they're also going to the Carroll County Chamber and using the grant program. So I think we need to either allow the Carroll County Chamber to use that grant program and not hand it here, or we need to handle it here and shut off the Carroll County Chamber. A lot of people look at it that edit funds are being dished out by the Carroll County Chamber. And Burlington and Delphi, the city, they get their own edit funds, so why are they not handing this out to them? And why are we doing it?
That's, that's my same logic. I, I like the oversight of having somebody that does this every day looking at all their requests holistically and saying, have them make the biggest end. That's why we. Just to make economic impact for the county at large.
Now, my other problem, my other problem that was stated, and I need Julia to clarify this, is that they are only right now allowed to ask for a thousand dollars. I believe the Carroll County Chamber needs to look at upping the amount because of, of course, everything has increased in price. But I don't feel us, we need to be handling this if we're allowing them to handle it.
And I, I'm just, where do we go from here? I'm sorry, Scott.
No, it's, it almost appears it's a double debt.
Yeah.
Have we not historically funded this out of edit?
Well, there's, there's bits of it as well, that last year we only approved, to my knowledge, we only approved Chambers' grant money.
We did that.
Last year, make sure you get that request.
Right, it was just the Burlington Fest. But when I, when we were, when we requested it, there was no grant program. So, and, but that is why I did not vote yes for hers, because I thought we need to discuss this all.
I agree. I, I don't like it. I mean, so where's Camden, where's, you know, I mean, like.
And obviously, they're going to ask, I would assume, through Julia's program.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I absolutely think I would, I would, I would vote to appropriate these to the chamber. I just don't want to appropriate them directly to those. Those are motions, I don't.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving Burlington Festival for 3,000 and Delphi Main Street for 3,500 out of edit funds, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion fails two to four. Scott, excuse me, Josh Blue, Scott Ayers, Tracy Martin, and Doc Stoff for voting aye.
Is the Camden Highway Delphi?
No, no motion, no motion. Any other edit, long discussions or motions?
I, I would like to make a request, I know that, and I assume everyone got the, either text or email with some of the financials, but I think we've asked before for financials from the Chamber. I don't know if you provide those to the commissioners or not on an annual basis. I think, being a fiscal body, we should receive those as well.
Okay.
You know, it's, it gets more and more difficult to, you know, just say, yes, here you go without having any oversight, how it's distributed, how it's spent, how it's looked at, how it's viewed. So, I, I would make a request to annual, get that information.
Operational budget?
Yep, absolutely.
And did you all receive edit budget, what we spent last year, the year before? I just emailed it yesterday.
Yeah.
If you did, I have.
We got it.
Okay, so at least you know that, but you're talking about complete, not just. Right, you're talking about operational.
Yeah, operational balance sheet, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Any other discussion on edit funds? Mike, did you have a comment?
I just, not on edit, it was just a correction, on that additional that needs to be advertised, it's for emergency management, not EMS. And the dollar amount is 15,722.
Oh, yeah.
And then.
You might give 50 dollars more, Michael?
So the highway just dies on the other side of the edit?
Correct.
And then, on the, that 60,000.
Just, just a moment. Mike, continue.
So, on that 60,000 on the radio power upgrade.
Yes.
And then you spent, the equipment has been ordered, I just couldn't get an encumberment done because they never gave me the purchase order or anything. We wanted to be advertised for the 60.
The overall two?
It's been already, it was fully advertised last time. It was advertised last year.
It's all right.
The advertising's been done, and that's what's important. Okay. But we didn't spend any of the money, so.
So it was appropriated as.
Last one. So, if, if they, if you have agreed to purchase it and they will give you a purchase order, that's all you need to, and we can still do it in encumberment, if you prefer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I know the, but, you know, just, we just don't have your documentation.
Right. There's been a 10% increase in price already from the time that we ordered it. And with the arrival date being in April, if we would have waited until January, one of the things that you asked when we did this, if we would have waited until this month to order it, we wouldn't be getting it till October. So, when we did it.
Thanks, man. Thank you.
Sharon, do you have a number?
Well, I was, I mean, I'm looking at my budget. The only, the only line that actually has that amount fully in it is my clerical. But we won't be doing as much mailing because it's not countywide.
Well, we can backfill this next month.
Right, so I mean, I guess, I don't.
Do you have expenditures in the next 30 days for clerical?
No.
So, I mean, we can, we can transfer it today and then backfill it next month with an addition.
So I can just figure out election support?
She is, I have a clerical line.
Well, no, I have, I have a line item, election support.
Election support with 88,000.
That's why I was confused as to why you're.
She can pull all that out of there.
Yeah, I have an election budget, and then I have an election support line, that I can take the whole amount out of that.
In the budget.
Yes, out of election.
And which, what kind of, what number is it?
3,010.
3,000 is out of services, so we shouldn't be down there. So she should transfer it into a clerical line? She has 20,000 dollars in her 3,000 line, but she shouldn't be buying.
She, she has ten thousand dollars in her three thousand line, but she should be buying three thousand dollars in her three thousand line. So, she should transfer it to the four thousand.
So, I can give you that number. Yeah, you have to, so...
Yeah, so, my, I, I move that we transfer it to the number...
Thirteen-five?
No, it's, it's, it's thirty.
Can you, I think the paper, from the table, from the seat that I bring, oh, I'm sorry, I have, thirty-five-three.
I move to transfer thirty-five thousand three hundred from election support to a line to be assigned by the auditor for a capital outlay for the election support.
I'll second that.
You said to a line that will be assigned by the auditor?
Yeah.
For a capital outlay?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the board of transfer thirty-five thousand three hundred dollars from election support to a line that will be assigned by the auditor for capital outlay. Motion by Josh Blue, seconded by Scott Ayers. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything else on the agenda, is there anything else that needs brought before the council?
Doug?
Tim, I just had this annual report, but I could do it next meeting if you will be there, you're running late.
No, that's fine, how long, how long, the...
Five minutes, fine.
Five minutes is great, you can get it.
Thank you. So, this is just the annual report for our EMS service for two thousand thirty-two. I won't go down through everything, I'll just kind of highlight real quick what it is. Attachment number one is our run stats, so it gives you all the different categories, all the different township, how many runs are each category. Also has it in our average response time, which is eight, three, five, eight minutes after... The third page in there is the AccuMed financial summary. So, that's all the money that we received through AccuMed, the building services. I did put down there at the bottom where I wrote in, so we had our Medicare cost report, that was at, what we get over and beyond, that Malcon does that for us, files that report, so that was an extra sixteen thousand one seventy-two. Fuel tax credit was fifty-five hundred point three dollars, which was, again, Malcon figured that for us. Copying fees, or anytime I copy charts or anything like that, that was two hundred and thirty-four dollars eighty-nine cents. The tracks program brought in thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents. And then the tracks prepay, what that is, is some, when we send something out saying that they owe us money, some of those people will come in and pay that here and not have it go into the system. So, that's, that was that two thousand dollars that they...
Almost sixteen thousand total through the tracks program.
So, that was an extra thirty-eight thousand one ninety-three that we brought in, so if you take that and you add it into our payments, first payments, we're just over six hundred thousand dollars. And we have about a fifty percent reimbursement rate from what we bill out and what we collect, which is really good. The third page there is just the attachment from the track program that shows that amount, that thirteen thousand that we brought in. The fourth page is our, actually what our fees are, and then it has suggested fees over here on the side, so we were matching that pretty good with those suggested fees. I'll let you go through that. The last page is the twenty-twenty-three fee schedule, so that's what the insurance companies will pay, so Medicare and Medicaid, and then the prostitution, that's what that will allow up to. So, you won't ever get any more than those figures, even if you charge a thousand dollars, you're only gonna get a hundred eighty-two dollars there, depending on what category you're in.
Don't we consider it rule?
Uh, yeah, we're rule. Just kind of briefly going over to, we did return about forty-four thousand dollars in our budget from last year that we didn't reuse. New equipment purchases, we do have two of the auto loads installed in the ambulances in our functioning, and our crews take you tremendously. If you ever get a chance to stop by and look what those things are, I think Scott can see what those are, it's, it makes a tremendous difference. It's what I have in terms of you. And so, we'll get the other two, as soon as we get the recur done and we get the new truck in twenty twenty-four. Ambulance remount, that's the schedule for May. And then you can just look down some of the weekly outreach stuff that we do, our Carroll Elementary School, Hall Job, Bacon Fest, Fort H, Fair, Burnham. Some of those things that we do out in the community. Number six on there is our state pharmacy license, we have pinged that this year, we have to have that now to have controlled substances stored at our location in Kansas. We have a state pharmacy license, and then to look down at the twenty-two, twenty-two projects, we have to get a DVA license. We're about to work on that, just to come here, trying to look at all the things here. Track program, we're gonna continue, and then Medicare data report, unfortunately, we got selected this year to report to CMS. So, we have, they have a big reporting system, and we have to, like, that's where we input our budget, and how much we use, and fuel, and payroll, and overtime, and there's a whole big thing that you have to do, I guess we'll, we'll probably do that on a monthly basis as well. And where, where?
I wouldn't mind piggybacking on his report. When I was at work in Robbinsport, I heard a couple of firefighters that just praised our system in Carroll County, and I called Doug a couple of weeks ago and told him, they're like, "A lot of counties are trying to duplicate what Carroll County is doing, and, you know, how efficient and how well it works." And now that Brady is up at Cass County, I think they'll probably try to swing them in line as well, but, you know, it's a shame they lost him, but hopefully he can help out Cass County. But there's a, a huge pat on the back to my ears to hear that from, you know, people outside the county that are praising our system.
We have, we have great people, do a good job, too, we try to do.
Can I ask?
Thanks, sir.
I have a quick question, what department was that that we wanted to start in the tracks program? That does not put it down.
Uh, probation.
Probation.
So, is that the probation department that I have, the trainers started, um, just...
Yes.
So, it's those?
Okay. Any other discussion that needs to come before council? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I, I just wanna ask, if, do we want to set a date on Carroll Manor, are we gonna entertain a proposal at the next monthly meeting? Or what, what's the action step?
Who should be doing, like, what she says, who should be doing the plan to help this, I mean, is it us or the trainers or...
I, I would say the commissioners should be doing it.
The council's only responsibility is to, is to, is to, is to approve a budget. An operational plan is not our duty. And we need to see an operational plan...
Twenty-four thousand dollars, we have to have a reasoning for that twenty-four thousand, and a plan.
Right.
You said you want, the, the council all wants it to be successful, so isn't that everyone's responsibility?
No, it is not. It's our, it's our job to be stewards of the funding, we don't tell people what to do.
And I agree with the commissioner, I agree with what I stated.
Entertaining commentary from citizens seems to be a part of what the council responsibilities should be.
The, the other concern that I have is that, like, this individual doesn't start in that capacity until February first. So, if we anticipate some kind of a timeline, some type of a plan put together by the superintendent of the Manor for us to entertain, that can't happen until after she's in that role. So, I, I would say at earliest, our next scheduled meeting.
Well, can I just add to that, okay, have you ever thought about having a joint meeting with the commissioners, so you guys are on the same page? You're just, you're saying that you fund it, and I understand it, and then they approve the plan, maybe we should get together.
I, I think that's a great comment.
I mean, that's my problem, is that you come in here and you say, "Well, the commissioners threw that number at me." Well, you're walking into the head row, you need to know what that number's for.
They threw that number in front of all of us. Go brown dead.
At the commissioners' meeting.
Okay.
If her as a leader...
She was not hired at that point.
I would like to suggest something, I think it starts with a department head, 'cause they know what they want to do and they need to do and everything. So, why can't the Carroll Manor develop a committee? She has a lot of volunteers that sat in here and said that they wanted to help, grab them up, have a committee.
She has that ability.
Yeah, I mean, well...
As of February first.
That's called...
Either of us.
It's called planning, yeah, Martha can do that with her and work together.
Agreed.
And then present it to the commissioners, and then present it to the council.
Agreed.
That's very practical.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I mean, it's, it's practical, if it's been done to us, though. I think we've said that for two months.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
This motion was adjourned.
I don't have a second.
Second.
See, all gotta say here. See ya, see ya, Mo. You'll make a second to it here, and that's, that's... Those people, I'm outta here. We do like everybody else, just get a little bit of...